And if you'll stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding the agenda? I think, Robert, you have amended agenda. Is that correct?
Well, we had, we have one additional item to add to the agenda and whether it be an action in discussion item. So whether or not you want to make that as AA or, or at the end of the action, or if you want to make it item F, whatever the board wants to do, but it's in regards to the sale of the county nursing home. And I think the, this has been provided to all the board members and so forth.
All right.
And also, I don't, I don't, of course, you don't have to vote it in, but I also, under my report, we will not need the closed session any longer either.
All right, so we're removing the closed session. Let's just make that item nine A one and we'll make nine A, nine A two. Is that okay?
Sure.
Any other questions regarding the agenda? If not. Or you've got a motion for Mr. Scott to approve them agenda. Second for Mr. Tuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the citizen comment period. This is not the VDOT public hearing. This is, that'll be later. So I do have one person signed up for the citizen comment period. Russell Smith. Mr. Smith, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Goode, Virginia. Carl Vance is my representative down there. I'm here to voice my disagreement with the codes and building codes of Bedford County that you have to buy. I live way back off the main road, gravel potholes, and they tell me what I can and what I can't do on my land that I worked hard to pay for. Bedford County should have some kind of amendments for people that live in remote areas like me. It's bad that you can't close up a carport to keep the snow and bad weather out. It's bad you can't let someone live in a camper temporarily while they get their life together. It's bad you can't let chickens run free in the remote area. And if you've got chickens, the wire on the fence has to be so high, has to be so high. I understand if I was building a house to live in, getting a builder permit makes sense. I got a electrical permit just the other day to put Lex Twisty on my adjoining lot. That makes sense. Getting that too permit could save my life. But closing in a carport, needing people stay in a camper temporarily and letting chicken, chickens run free won't be deadly, won't be deadly. It's hard for me to understand that if I, if our people choose to live way back and live in a normal house, then that person has to, to get a permit to do some small things around the house don't make sense to make it nicer. It seems that Bedford County government wants more control of, the control of residents. The county government has got, set mandates right now for some organizations to get COVID vaccinated than others do not. I understand that people that live in very nice areas probably have to get permits. There is supervisor in this area that probably has skipped this area where they, that do something around their house. They have skipped getting permits in their house. There is a supervisor in this room that you can't see through the house from the road. Why does Bedford County do this if they want more control or want more money, want more money from the people to have to live in cheaper houses just to be able to get by? And I appreciate, thank y'all for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else during the citizen comment period? All right. I'll close that and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Hiss?
All right. We only have one item under the consent agenda this evening, and it's for a grant submittal. It's a resolution approving the submission of the governor's agriculture and forestry industries development infrastructure grant application, and this grant is on behalf of Bramble Hollow Farm.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. You've got a motion for Mr. Johnson. Second for Mr. Tuck. Is this a roll call? I believe it is. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carried seven oh. It was a three minute. All right. Next, we have approval of the minutes, which we have none. So, public hearings, presentations. First, we have a pro, a presentation of a proclamation in recognition of May 2022 as Older Americans Month. Charlotte Bansley.
Wyatt Woody's gonna join me.
Stuart Saunders is up.
Stuart Saunders. This is a proclamation in recognition of Older Americans Month that we probably all, most of us could be up here but all read it in honor of us all. Whereas a month of May in the year 2022 has been designated by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to be recognized as Older Americans Month. And whereas the county of Bedford recognizes the importance of Older Americans Month with an elder fest celebration. And whereas Bedford County Department of Parks and Recreation will proudly host the 41st Annual Elder Fest Celebration in honor of our senior citizens in recognition of Older Americans Month. And whereas May 56, 2022, Elder Fest Celebration will be to honor the senior citizens of the county of the, of the citizens of Bedford County. Being further proclaimed that the Bedford County Board of Supervisors does hereby affirm the month of May in the year 2022 to be recognized as Older Americans Month. And the Elder Fest Celebration will be upheld to honor and celebrate our senior citizens with a special event. Thank you guys very much for all you do.
All right. Next, we have the public hearing for the Bedford County Fiscal Year 23 to 28 Secondary Six-Year Plan. I'm going to call residency administrator Todd Daniel Ford for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you noted, we are here tonight to talk about the secondary six-year plan for Bedford County and our many, many, many unpaved roads. As you know, every year, we revise the secondary six-year plan with hopes every year to add at least a project, a road, or two to the six-year plan. We've been pretty successful in that in, in recent years, and I believe and you'll hear that in a moment that we can do that again this year. So, in summary, real quick, let me back up. What I'm gonna do is read a brief summary and about the six-year plan and give you a few project-specific highlights, and then I'm gonna use, this is a Bedford County tool, actually, that's, that is very, very nice, I must say, and I'm gonna run through the projects that are currently in the secondary six-year plan that was adopted last year about this time. So, the secondary six-year plan is, as you know, is updated annually with funds allocated to the counties across the Commonwealth by the, our Commonwealth Transportation Board for the purpose of performing construction work on our secondary roadway system. We have two fund types in our secondary six-year plan, unpaved road funds and telefee funds. Unpaved road funds are specific to roadways or can be used for roadways that carry 50 vehicles or more a day. So, traffic count is very important when we talk about unpaved road funds. Telefee funds can be used on roads with less than 50. The problem with telefee, it makes up about 18% of our plan, so the greater dollars are in unpaved road funds. So, the, the traffic count's important. The draft Bedford County Secondary Six-Year Plan for the fiscal years 2023 through 2028, total six point, just a little more than $6.9 million, which the board will set the priorities for, and we will distribute the funding. The current plan includes 19 rural rustic roadway improvements and three county-wide call centers that we use to basically pay some employee salary and also for new sign installation on the secondary system. So, an example may be a project that we're working on that doesn't have a, a project designation initially. We use some of those funds to work towards that project development. It's pretty minor compared to the, the whole plan, and they are all telefee funds in those call centers. In the plan, we've, as I mentioned, we've got several roads I want to highlight, Route 644 Old Syfax Road and Route 649 Jackson Road, and I'll, I'll hit all those as I go through the roads in a second, but both of those have been completed, and I'm sure the residents are very happy with that. Route 628 Minto Drive, Route 635 Judas Chapel Road are both, they have to go to contract, so our state forces won't construct those roads. They are in development, have been in development for some time, but we will, we plan to get those to advertisement this summer, and we may see some construction this fall. We won't complete them this calendar year. Right now, right-of-way and some easement and right-of-entry coordination is underway on both of those projects. We are in the preliminary engineering stages for four projects, Route 680 Smyrna Hill Road, Route 636 Carroll Road, Route 643 Bellevue Road, and Route 660 Old Farm Road.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Are you able to?
No, I'm, I'm gonna go through, I'm hitting, I'll, I'll repeat that when I go through these. I want to do the summary, and then I'll run through the plan.
Fair enough.
Oh. So, those four roads, we will actually construct with our state forces. It allows us to go a little bit faster. And we are, as I said, doing the preliminary engineering now, and we plan to construct those roads this summer and fall. So, that'll be four more this year. Utilizing the FY '28 projected allocations, all the projects in the plan, the 19 road projects, are fully funded within the six years reflected in the 23 through 28 six-year plan. Based upon our preliminary funding allocations, we're gonna have approximately $1.2 to $1.5 million to distribute in this round or this revision. And I, I gave you a range of 1.2 to 1.5 because there are some inflation issues that we're dealing with to pin down on some project cost, but we're pretty confident somewhere in that range is what we'll have to allocate. So, what I'll do now, like I said, I'm gonna run through the, the projects that are currently in the plan. There's 19 of them, and you're gonna see a green or a red dashed line. The, if it's green, the road's been completed. I mentioned two of those. The red dashed line is, is not yet completed. So, the first one is Old Syfax Road, basically between Roaring Run and Hawkins Ridge Road. Second one is Minto Drive, which is between, down in the Leesville area, Leesville Road area. Whoops, that's going over here. Judas Chapel, which is the balance of the unpaved road section of Judas Chapel. It starts at Mountain Top Lane and goes towards Jordan Town Road. Number four is Jackson. You see, it's green. We completed that recently. That is Bethel Church Road over to Alum Springs, basically where 460 intersects at the county line. Smyrna Hill is coming up. It's one of the four, and you'll see those coming up here together. Smyrna Hill is off of Goose Creek Valley Road up to Pike Road. Then we've got Carroll Road from Navigation Point to the dead end or the end of state maintenance off of Goodview Road. Bellevue Road, now this is a very short stretch of Bellevue Road between Goode Station Road and the railroad bridge, the wooden railroad bridge, if you're familiar with where that is. It's, it's honestly just less than two tenths of a mile, so a short segment. And there's, there's quite a bit more of unpaved along Bellevue. Number eight is Old Farm Road, Route 660, and it goes from where the paved section ends, and it connects the paved section that comes off of Coffee Road. There's a very short segment off of Coffee that we'll connect to, and that'll complete the hard surfacing of Old Farm Road. So, those are the four that are currently in development, and we should get constructed this year. So, moving on to McDaniel. Number nine is in the Five Forks area. It's about a six-tenths mile segment of it, so it's not all of McDaniel, just the piece when you leave the Five Forks intersection. And Blankenship, Route 791, in the Stewartsville area, is a dead end unpaved road right at the beginning of the four-lane section. So, that will actually construct all of Blankenship. Pike Road, so this segment of Pike Road is a continuation. As we head north, it starts at Wannagrove Church and goes to Hutchins Road. And once you go north of Hutchins, you're still unpaved up in that section. And we've got Carter's Mill, and Carter's Mill's right along unpaved road through the mountain. This piece will pick up at the end of the unpaved segment, which is right near Carter Mill Creek, if you know where that is, and it will go over and tie down about where Old Fire Trails, a private road, intersects with Carter's Mill Road. Then we've got Bateman Bridge Road. It's a very, very, very short segment of road that remains in the forest area, tremendous traffic volume, and that will complete the hard surfacing of that connection between 661 and 221. Homestead Drive is 661. Templeton Mill is in the Boonsborough area off of Trent's Ferry. That will complete the paving of all of Templeton Mill Road. Then we've got Lipscomb, and this is a portion of Lipscomb. So, if you, if you travel Lipscomb south from Stanton River from Route 24, where Stanton River High School is, we will start at the end of the hard surface, and we will go down to Shoulder Run. It's a creek. There was a bridge there several years ago. We replaced it with a box, but it's, it's a prominent stream down there. That's where we'll stop that segment. There'll still be some, between Altice Road and, and this segment here, there'll be some unpaved. Then we've got Angel Place. Angel Place is off of Island Creek in the eastern end of the county off near 24. Von Roy. We're gonna do another, about six tenths of Von Roy. This will not complete all of Von Roy, so towards Wheatland, you'll still have some unpaved. And then 18 is Mormon Road. Mormon Road is off of Goodview Road, goes to the lake, to the Marina Dead Ends. We will complete all of Mormon when we build that. And the last one in the current, currently in the plan is Woods Road between 43 and Route 644 of Mill. This will complete the segment that runs along Big Otter River. So, that will connect the two ends of Woods Road that is currently hard-surfaced. And, Mr. Chairman, that, that's a very quick summary and overview of the roads in, currently in the plan. And I can take any questions or?
Any questions?
So, the Von Roy portion of it, Todd, is not, it's not where gravel meets gravel on Wheatland and Von Roy. It's the other end of Von Roy.
Right. So, we will build, Mr. Johnson, let me make sure I'm telling you right here, because we've got 19 of them. So, when you come off of Magnolia, you've got a
Right.
piece of paved, and then we're gonna go about six more tents with the hard surface, but it doesn't go all the way to the, the far end where you're speaking of. And there'll still be a, what is that, about seven tenths of unpaved that'll remain on Von Roy, I think, if my math is right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Todd.
I can hear you.
Is there any way you can send us that PowerPoint so we can have it?
This here?
Yeah.
This is actually a county website, so the county GIS, your, your county folks produced this, so I, I should say thank you to them. JP, our assistant resident engineer in Bedford, worked with your staff to put this together, and it is, yeah, it's really nice.
But, but we can, I mean, it's in the agenda, but we can send a separate email with a convenient link.
I don't think I have it in the agenda. That's why I'll see it. Do you have it?
The link's in there, but we can send a separate email, make it convenient.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any other questions?
Are you gonna address any maintenance?
Not typically, Mr. Davis, for the secondary six-year plan, public hearing, we, we don't, I mean, I'll take a question or make a note, but this is specifically for
The six-year plan.
construction or improvement of
Understand.
of roadways, so, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Todd? All right. Well, we have a number of people signed up to speak, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing at this point. All right. All right. I'm gonna call on you the way I have it presented to me. Greg Wood. And on deck will be Louis Thomas.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity.
And before you get started, if you could just state your name for the, for the record, name and district or name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. All right. So, Greg Wood, 2905, Belsma Road, District Seven, correct? All right. So, I live on Belsma Road, and I have a number of representatives, residents with me, and thank you so much for your support and being here tonight. In 1995, we approached this, we had the same approach. We tried to get our road on the six-year plan. Belsma Road is out in Goode, and it's a connector between Goode Road and 460. So, it comes out right below Riverside Veterinarian and the Big Otter Bridge. It's used as a pass-through, but, and also, it's been highly developed over the, the last 25 years. Since I've moved out there, I moved out there in 91, I think is what my wife and I recall. We've had a 428% increase in housing, and that's not counting me. So, and now, with different road specifications, things like that, we really, we're just too big for our bridges. And, you know, the speed is an issue. The safety is the highest concern. It's not so much about having a nice paved road. It's more, it is about the safety of the road. We've actually reverted, and we've gone, so when I first moved out there, we had a number of houses out there that had children. The bus came down, picked the children up, of course, and had, and Mr. Grishaw, who's not here tonight, who worked for VDOT at that time, but for Campbell County, VDOT knew the rules, the regulations, the specs, and he got a lot of things done. And actually, had gotten us on the six-year plan at that time, but due to the cost of the bridge that has flooded like 25 times since I've been there, they got kicked off the six-year plan just due to cost. But, long story short, it's coming back. So, with the new housing, with the new residents that we have, we have children. And so, the bus will be coming down to there now, and actually, I have a bus driver here who is not even able to go to the children and drop them off. Parents had to actually meet him at the beginning of the road due to all the construction issues and safety concerns that we were having. There's about four areas in the road that actually, two cars cannot meet. The car width is about 90 inches, mirror to mirror, and the road itself is 140 inches wide, and it's been like that since 1991. So, you know, we had all addressed, we had addressed several of these issues back in 1995, and we were promised that we would get these things addressed and these issues fixed, and VDOT has not actually addressed any of those issues as of today. So, again, we're in 2000, it's 2022, and I'm right back to 1995. So, I guess my time is up. But I just wanted to thank you for your time and look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you. And after Louis Thomas, we'll have Rover Ellington on deck. If you're on deck, go ahead and come on up and stand behind me if you don't mind. All right.
Good evening to each of you. My name is Louis Thomas. I live at 1426 Founding Way Road in Lowry. I'm here tonight to present the needs and concerns regarding Founding Way Road. Founding Way Road is a 1.2-mile road joining gravel road, joining Lowry Road, which is a hard-surface road to Timber Ridge Road, also a hard-surface road. When my wife and I first bought our property on Founding Way Road back in 1990, there were only four homes on the road. When I presented the needs and concerns of Founding Way Road three years ago, in April of 2019, there were 19 homes on the road. The number now has grown to 22. Three of these homes are currently under construction on the former Kennedy Christmas Tree Farm property, and it's my understanding that two additional homes will be under construction in the near future. I'm here tonight to kindly request that the board place Founding Way Road in the Rural Rustic Roadway Program within the secondary six-year plan. I, along with many residents of Founding Way Road, would like to see the road surface-treated and be able to enjoy the other benefits that would follow under the Rural Rustic Roadway Program, such as the installation of speed limit signs, as well as improvements to some of the ditches and the road width. Concerning the ditches, there are a number of sections on Founding Way Road where the ditches are dangerously deep. In addition, there are sections of the road that are only one lane. It just so happens that where the road is mostly narrow, it's also where the ditches are mostly deep and dangerous, and this is a great concern to all residents and property owners of Founding Way Road. I've been made aware by Mr. Todd Daniel with the Virginia Department of Transportation that Founding Way Road, unlike when I presented three years ago, has now met the traffic count criteria in order to be eligible to be placed in the secondary six-year plan. I have communicated also by phone with my district supervisor, District Seven, Mrs. Tammy Parker, concerning my presenting here tonight. In addition, I've communicated with the residents and property owners of Founding Way Road through email concerning my request to the board this evening. Rather than presenting the board with signed petitions this evening, I would like to present to you printed email and text communications from Founding Way Road residents and property owners. I've already given those printed copies before the meeting tonight to the clerk. There are actually 18 Founding Way Road residents and property owners represented in these communications, and actually, 19. One will be coming. I'll get that to Mrs. Parker in the next day or so. It came even today. I thank the board this evening for your consideration of placing Founding Way Road in the Rural Rustic Roadway Program within the secondary six-year plan, and I look forward to a positive response concerning this request. If you have any questions, I'm available to take those at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Grover Ellington, and on deck would be, I think Sarah Dooley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Grover Ellington. I live at 2053 Belsma Road. My wife and I have been living there for 20 years. During that time, I've seen three accidents right in front of my house, so of course, safety is a big thing for me. Directly across from my house, I feel like there should be a guardrail put there. I've seen two cars on top of its roof there during the time. It's a steep saw. It goes off steeply off the edge of the road, and if a car keeps rolling, it's gonna end up in the river down on the bottom. Also, in that section, it's unsafe because of the roads are narrow. There's not enough room for two cars to pass. During the time that we've been living there, it's been eight new houses built, so there's a decreased amount of traffic, and with that, the road conditions worsen. There's a lot of potholes. We'll call VDOT to have it scraped. One week later, the potholes are back. With those eight houses, there's also a business that runs at the end of the road, so all of his workers are also coming in and out along with all the, through traffic that comes through to get a 460. So, and most of all, the, the safety is my big concern. The road width and the gravel, of course, is slick. That's pretty much all I have to say, so.
Thank you. Next, I have, is it Sarah Dooley? Looks like an S A R, maybe, Smyrna Hill Road? Oh, Sam Dooley. All right, sorry.
Not a woman.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it sort of looked like two letters there.
Just on that Smyrna Hill, what's the projective of the, of the timeframe when they start till they finish? And are they gonna block that road?
That's a question we'll have the VDOT administrator answer after we've heard all the comments, so.
Okay.
Is that your only question?
Yeah, that's the only question I got. Just, you know, when they start, when they finish, are they gonna block the road with the, you know, on the maintenance of it when they do that?
All right, well. All right, well, all right, thank you. And Scott Shepard? You can state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Scott Shepard, and I live at 9025 Pike Road. And I'm here with a couple of my neighbors talking about the Smyrna Hill project that's supposed to be on the six-year plan, I guess. And what it is, is we feel like there's plenty of evidence that the road needs to be paved all the way to the end of Pike Road. We've got two bridges out there. I have video on my phone, I would love to show you all, but they said they couldn't get it on here. But we've had floods that have kept people landlocked. We have roads that have hundreds of potholes. We have our road is like 10 feet wide in places you cannot pass. We have to use people's driveways, we have to back up to get out of people's ways. It's just a lot of need. And from Smyrna Hill to the end of Pike Road, there's probably 28 houses. It's approximately 1.9 miles. And Smyrna Hill project that's in, in consideration, or I guess is on the books to be fixed, is only in front of those five houses and doesn't include two bridges. And what I couldn't understand is why there was like a Band-Aid put on a bridge that was paved 50 feet in front of the bridge and 50 feet beyond the bridge, but they, they obviously saw a reason to pave that part of the road because it, it needs a lot of work. And I've been out there since, I've owned the house since like 2005. So basically 17 years out there, and anytime it rains, we get flooded. There's been multiple times when we couldn't get out, multiple times where I've seen my neighbors come up with their equipment, fix the road for the entire place, who knows how much money they've spent. But there's just a great need for this to be looked at, examined closer, and, you know, go ahead and fix our road. Because it's just, you know, there's lots of nice houses out there. People paying a lot of taxes on the property, and, you know, we have a need just like everyone else. And to pave this section of road at Smyrna Hill is, is a small part of what really needs to be done. So, I'd like to know if there's any consideration for that. I know, I've heard that there's, you know, 300, 400, $500,000 earmarked money to correct this issue, and, you know, that was 15 years ago. And we're just looking for justice, I guess you would say, because it seems like, you know, there's the money there, but no one, no one addresses the situation ever. I'd like to, to think that in the future, that something could, in the near future. I mean, it's dust, it's potholes, it's really not a gravel road. 90% of the time, it's like dust or mud. So, you know, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Jim Cunningham. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
How are you doing? I'm Jim Cunningham on the very end of Pike Road. Understand that, you know, they're doing Smyrna, I'm glad for that. But part of Pike Road, they're going to do from the church to Hutchinson Road, there's only seven houses on that stretch, it's like 1.2 miles. If they did from Smyrna to the end of our road, we've got 26 houses and three more going in. It's the same distance, and they could shoot off and go to Hutchinson Road too for the same amount. Plus, like he was saying, our road, we've got a lot of hills going up like this, and you see a car coming at you, you can't see it till you get to the top. I've had to run off a road because of school bus coming through. We've got, I think it was nine kids on our road. The buses are up and down it all day long, and it's just really bad. I mean, we've got deep ditches on the side, and I've gone into it once myself because didn't know we had any room. And like I said, my wife, she is a pharmacist at Lewis Gale. She has to be at work on these certain days. There are several times we've had really bad floods, has washed the road out totally. And, you know, we call them up, and they'll bring a load of gravel down and fill it in so she can get in and out. And it's been going on like that for 13 years, and we were told 3:00 to 5:00 when we moved in. And it's just, it's getting worse and worse. And, you know, they come in, they do a really good job of putting gravel down, spreading it. Then a couple of days later, there's holes all over it again. And, I mean, they, I came home one day and they put some new gravel out, and they rolled it out, and they even put rollers and rolled it. As I came home, I was like, oh man, they paved it. Because it looked beautiful. And a week later, this hole's all over it again. But I was like, said, we don't have room to pull off. If somebody comes, we have to pull into somebody's driveway. The bus is going in and out, they have to turn around and field and get back on the road. There's, the roads are just not wide enough for anybody to get on, unless you shoot through somebody's driveway. And it's quite a bit happens. We've had a couple of accidents going up real steep hill. We've got some turns that go up like this, and you cannot see somebody coming down. I've had, bus coming down one time, I've had to back all the way back down because I didn't know whether to turn around. That's about all I got to say.
Mr. Cunningham, just for clarification, you're advocating for Smyrna Road, is that correct?
Well.
Or are you advocating for Pike Road?
Pike. Because like I said, they're doing Smyrna, then they're doing Pike Road from the church to Hutchinson Road, which almost joins together. And there's only seven houses on Pike towards the church, which they've already redone several times because of the dam has busted loose. If they took that and put on ours and went down to Hutchinson, be the same amount of time and the length.
All right, thank you for your clarification. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on the VDOT six-year plan before I close the public hearing? Yes?
Sure.
Just please state your name and address for the record.
All right, I'm Randy Sexton, I live on Bells Mill Road, and I've lived on that road all my life, which is 76 years. When I was small, there was just a few houses out there, and now we have about 31 houses. Most everybody on that road is a two-car and a lot of them three-car families. I drive a bus to Beaufort County Schools, and I've been doing it for about 20 years now since rubble tech, rubble tech shut down. And there's two buses that follow that road twice a day. Not to mention handicap buses that come back as enforced through there, using that road as a cut-through. And also, there is numerous traffic that uses that road as a cut-through between 460 and 221. And the road in a lot of places is really, really narrow, as Mr. Wood said. You take that school bus as big as it is, and then you've got them mirrors sticking out on the side of them too. You've got to climb a bank in a lot of places to let other traffic go by or find somebody's driveway to, to let traffic go by. And there is a lot of traffic on that road, and there's a lot of water issues on that road. Up above my house, which is about quarter of a mile or more, there's some hard surface off of Goode Road onto part of Bells Mill Road, but that was privately paved far years ago. But where that pavement ends, all that water comes down that road for about a quarter of a mile just past my property and turns and goes between me and the Watson property. And it is eroding it very bad down there. And at one time, the water was going right toward my well until VDOT came out a few days back and ditched some of it. But that's just kind of a Band-Aid fix on the problem. But that road needs some attention. Just stop and think. You lived on a road 76 years, and all you're going to get out of it is gravel and scraping once in a while? That's, I don't mean no reflection on the guys that come out there and do the road scraping, and they do a good job. But there ought to be money set aside to at least pave this road, do some kind of pavement work on it. I, I would almost bet, if I was a betting person, in 10 years, the money spent for gravel and scraping and emergency maintenance on it would more than pay for paving that road and widening that road. I appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you. I think that's probably true for a lot of these roads. All right. Going to close the public input portion. And Todd, there were a few questions that were asked. And there were a few that I, that I had, that I took notes on. If you don't answer them, I might ask you a question.
Yeah, I'll try to answer a couple here that I made notes of. So first on Smyrna Hill, I think Mr. Dooley asked about closing the road, so the answer is no. Typically, we don't close these unpaved roads to construct them. We may close them for a very short period of time to install a culvert, a pipe, if we've got a deep enough cut, and, and that is usually, we do our best to restrict that to like a nine to three. We are cognizant of some school bus traffic and what have you. So typically, the answer is no, and for Smyrna Hill, we shouldn't be closing it. And if we do, it'll be short periods of time. It'll be under flaggers, is how we would typically build those. Mr. Shepard asked about Pike Road. Why do we hard surface at the bridge? And that is, it looks kind of odd, right? Why do you do that? We actually do that in a couple of places. We do it at bridge approaches on unpaved roads, and we do it at connections. So, one that many people drive by every day and probably never think about it. But Maryman Way that comes 715 from 803, which is Timber Ridge Road, over to 460 by the nursery, the first 50, 75 feet of that is hard surface. It's an unpaved road. But it keeps that aggregate, that stone, from getting out into the main line of 460. So when we grade those roads, we need a good stopping point. So we will typically hard surface about 50 feet. Same for the bridges. We, when we track the stone, or the traffic does, or our motor grader tracks that stone up on the wooden deck bridges, you can imagine with traffic, it'll wear on the bridge surface. So we do that in an attempt to preserve the bridges. It's not always the best answer, but that's why Pike and many others are surface treated about 50 foot from either side of, of our small timber deck bridges. Actually, I cannot, by code, use maintenance dollars to improve unpaved roads, and that's why we do this every year with the construction allocation for the hard ser, unpaved road improvements. So, that's the two I made note of. Did you, do you have some others?
Yeah, it was mentioned that Bells Mill Road was on the six-year plan at one point, and, and then was taken off?
Yeah.
Is that the case?
I made note of that from 1995. I can't speak back to 1995. I can speak back to 2005, when I first started working on the six-year plan for Bedford County. I don't recall Bells Mill being on the secondary six-year plan at that point. It could have been at some point, if you remember back in 2008 and 2009, we had some projects on, on the secondary six-year plan. And recall, I mentioned we only have two funding sources today. Back in '05, we had 11. So we had some formula money and all kind of VDOT lingo-type funds to distribute. We had some intersection projects. We had a project at Magnolia Drive. We had a project on Jordan Town Road at, I still call it the Hop In, at 24. Those projects fell off of the six-year plan because of the downturn in the economy at that point. I don't think Bells Mill was a victim of that reduction, but I will say it, it very well could have been on a plan back in the 90s. We do have a long list of unpaved roads in the county that we continually update and talk about and bring to the board in the work sessions. And many times, and no fault of the citizens, but I think some, some folks will misinterpret that list for the secondary six-year plan. I've talked to many, many folks about that. So regardless, I don't know back in 1995.
Are you able to confirm that it's at least in our, what we call our queue?
Oh yeah, Bells Mill is in our queue, yes sir. Yeah, and, and we are very aware of the additional homes on Bells Mill. No doubt, that is, that's a fact.
And then, one other question, and it's a general question for, for all of these. That is, do we have current traffic counts for the roads that were mentioned?
Yeah.
Bells Mill, Founding Way Road?
We do. I think in 2019, we saw a lot of, so we count traffic every six years on the secondary system. That's our process. Years ago, before the economy deflation in 2008, we actually counted unpaved roads that carried more than 50 vehicles. We counted those every three years because that's an important number. We no longer do that unfortunately. But we saw, and this varies by county across the Commonwealth, but we had a lot of routes counted in 2019 in Bedford County. So we've got updated counts. I think Mr. Thomas mentioned that Founding Way count has gone up several years ago. Don't hold me to this. I think we're around 40, and we're a little north of 50 now. And that was with the recent update. So we will have, we, you will see updated counts, not for 2021, but as recently as 2019. There may be a 2020 here or there sprinkled in the, in the list, but many for 2019.
And then, one other one, sorry, sorry for so many questions.
No.
On Bells Mill Road, there was a question about a guardrail. That probably wouldn't be a six-year money. However, is that something that can be investigated?
It could be. I will say it's very atypical to find guardrail on unpaved roads. We don't typically put the guardrail on, on roads of that, that classification. Traffic volume does go into that, that warrant decision for guardrail. But we will gladly look into that and be able to discuss it. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions?
I just wanted to make the comment that Bells, I'm sure you're aware of this. When you're on 460 and you want to go around Bells Mill, and you want to go to Farmington, they'll take you through that subdivision if you're, if you're on the GPS. And so, of course, I know that as a dirt roads, I stay off of it and I go on down. But people that don't, and they're just following the GPS, they have a lot of traffic going through there that's not living there just because of people following the GPS.
Yeah, GPS has really affected us in that way, ways, Google, many of them. If we have a crash on 220, it will quickly reroute traffic, and it has no real, no real concern over what type of road it is that it wants to. And it routes all traffic, unfortunately. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a request from a citizen of Rock Spring Road. Have his road added to consideration of its 3,100 feet, which go over half a mile. There's traffic count, he's estimating between 80 and 90 a day, not including the school bus, the mailman, or something else, but it's there next to the golf court.
Yes, sir. Nowhere, yes, sir, nowhere it's at, yes.
Put that on the list to consider?
Yes, we will, we'll have it on our list to discuss, yes, sir.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, when, when are you coming back, Todd?
May 9th.
May 9th?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM?
Yeah, we may be second on the work session.
For the citizens that might want to come for the work session part, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, and then we'll decide later that night?
Yeah, I will seek a consensus from the board on two to three projects, and then we will refine those estimates, add them to the six-year plan, and the plan will come back before you. Probably the first meeting in June for adoption. We'll have to work with Mr. His and his staff to get a schedule. But we should walk out of the work session with some consensus. Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions? All right. Sorry, this is questions from the board. All right, hearing none. Yeah, I was going to remind everyone that, thank you, Todd, that Todd will be coming back on May the 9th for a work session. So you can, you can come, there won't be any public comment period during that time, but you can observe the work session, and then we'll hopefully, as a board, make some decisions, give, have a consensus to give direction to them. We'll adopt the six-year plan sometime in June. All right. And next, we have a consideration of a resolution revising the bylaws for the Bedford County Agricultural Economic Development Advisory Board. This is Resolution R.042522-03. Staff, press.
Mr. Chair, he moved the, he moved the.
Oh, you're right, sorry. Sorry, I apologize. All right, we have item 9A1, which is a resolution to continue to operate the Bedford County nursing home as a county-managed facility. This is Resolution R.042522-07.
Are we going to make my, are you, what, are you going to present anything?
Robert?
I, I want to say a couple of words. The, the Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on April 18th. And that purpose of that public hearing was to solicit public comment about the potential sale of the Bedford County Nursing Home to, to an identified purchaser who was going to be American Healthcare LLC. American Healthcare withdrew their offer a couple hours before that public hearing. But the public hearings was conducted nonetheless. During the public hearing, there was, we had a couple dozen speakers, I think, that evening. A lot of good information was shared and a good opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to digest and consider what they heard based on various conversations and looking at the matter. It, the, the resolution in front of the board this evening is to continue the operations of the Bedford County Nursing Home as a county-operated facility. And not to sell the nursing home.
All right. Looks like Mickey, well, Mickey or Tammy, you guys fight over it.
Okay. I'm going to fight over it because it's in my district. So I like to make a motion that we approve Resolution R.042522-07. And that is to continue to operate the Bedford County Nursing Home as a county-managed facility.
Second that, Mr. Chair?
You've heard a motion from Mrs. Parker, a second from Mr. Davis. I'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we have 9A2, consideration of a resolution revising the bylaws for the Bedford County Agricultural Economic Development Advisory Board. This is Resolution R.042522-03. Staff presentation by Economic Development Director Pam Bailey.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. So this is something that staff has been asked by the Board of, by the Ag Board to bring to y'all. The Ag Board was created in 2007 by the Board of Supervisors to serve as a liaison between you and the Ag community. Recently, two items have been brought to the attention of the Ag, to the Ag Board by staff. So back in February, we started talking to them about a couple of things that were not really clear in their current bylaws. One is clarification of the Ag Board appointees regarding, do they just have to live there? Can they work in an area, own a business, own land? And the other one was to permit the creation of ad hoc committees. So these were first discussed at the February 2nd Ag Board meeting. And it was recommended by staff, as I said, to clarify the eligibility of members that are appointed to the Ag Board. And then we discussed it a little bit more in March, and then firmed up the language, and then they voted on it in April. So I bring it forward to you tonight. So regarding the first item, so when the board was created and the bylaws were established, it said that they should consist of twelve members that are appointed by the Ag, by the Board of Supervisors, and that they be from each of the seven districts. But it doesn't really clarify if they own land there or anything like that. So what the Ag Board decided was, can we specify what that means? And so they're asking that they be amended, that, to say that the Bedford County residents in each of the district, so as long as they own property, live or work in a particular district. There are five at-large seats. So there's twelve members of the Ag Board, seven from each of the districts, and then five that are, you know, at large. So let's see. Currently, there is one Ag Board member who lives in District Two and serves on the Ag Board in District One, and that is the chairman, Jeff Powers, who's been chairman since, I think, 2007. I think he's been on the board that long. Let's see. And so each of the Board of Supervisors still appoints someone to represent the district. They just don't necessarily have to live in the district, and that's, that's the first item. The second item came as a request from staff regarding the ad hoc and standing committees. So each of the, at each Ag Board meeting, we have committee reports as part of the agenda. However, the bylaws have not stated how they are created, nor how they're published, and they're subject to FOIA. So for legal purposes, and Patrick asked for this, that we are asking to be able to add this particular section to the Ag bylaws. So I did kind of show the changes, sort of track changes, so you can see specifically what they're asking for. Again, so shall consist of twelve. Instead of just members, that they're Bedford County residents, they thought that was important to include. And then that members shall be appointed from each of the seven county election districts and must own real property, work, or reside in a particular district. And then the second is, and I won't read the whole thing, but it's just basically saying that they have the ability to create ad hoc committees. For example, the solar committee.
May I ask a point of clarification on the ad hoc committees? The members of the ad hoc committees are still members of the Ag?
Correct.
Agricultural Advisory Board?
Correct.
Not other?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right, hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I move with adoption of Resolution R.042522-03. Resolution by the bylaws.
I was going to ask if there was any discussion, but I'm assuming there's no.
I would like to bring, make one point, Mr. Johnson, if that's okay. That first part where it says must own real property, work, or reside. Why would, why would you not maybe word it a little bit differently and say must reside or own an agricultural business versus own real property? Because several residents own multiple parcels of property. But either reside in it, or like in Mr. Powers' case, he has an agricultural business. So either one of those. And somebody can say this better than me because I can't talk.
So what she, so what she's saying is that, to, in keeping with past practice, and I think the, in the way the board has done it before, because I do remember Cynthia Gano serving on that board. And she served in a district in which she didn't reside, but she clearly had a substantial agricultural business within our community. And so the, the idea is that, that the person would either reside in the district or operate an agricultural business within the district that they would serve.
Mr. Chair, point of order. I think we have a call. I think we got a vote on that one first before we make an amendment. We got to vote that one down.
But there was no second. And I, and I did ask for questions. Because we hadn't had discussion yet. Normally, we would have.
It's out of order to have discussion between. You need, need either die for lack of a second or have a second, turn it down, then discuss.
All right. All right. So Mr. Johnson has a motion as it is. Is that correct? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second. So a motion from Mr. Johnson, second from Mrs. Bensley. And that's as it's presented. Is that correct? All right. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mrs. Parker?
No.
The chair votes no. All right. I'll entertain a motion. There's substitute motion here.
Let me, we finish our discussion.
Yeah, it was. All right. Any, any continued discussion?
Yes.
Substitution motion at this point.
Yeah, at this point, it's not.
I just want to make sure I understood that just residing in a district doesn't qualify you to serve on the Ag Board. You have to have a business. That's what I thought you was saying.
Either or.
No, you can, it can be residing in the district or having a business within the district that you would be representing. So let's say, let's say you, let's say you live in District Five, but you have an Ag business in District Seven. Theoretically, you could be appointed from District Five or District Seven if the seats are available. So you wouldn't have to, you could be either. So it gives, it gives the board additional flexibility.
I think what I'm hearing is the clarification is, is, does, can it be any property? Or does it need to be an agricultural property?
Agricultural property. Agricultural business.
Mr. Chair.
An agricultural business or reside. So either your, your residency is in a district or you have an agricultural business within a district.
Is there a definition somewhere for agricultural business?
And one of their questions, too.
Be in Virginia State Code. They define agriculture in a number of places.
One of the parts was land. Like if they owned land in another area. So that's.
But that's not residing, nor is it.
That's correct.
They're farming the land, I guess.
But they're farming the land. I guess that's business. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Not very profitable.
There's plenty of people who could certainly move down here from some big city and buy a large parcel of land and do absolutely nothing with it, might even want to do something with it that is contrary to agricultural vested interest. And they could strive to be on the board.
Have to be a resident of it.
I, I strongly am convinced that it's extremely important that we do call it an Ag Board. I believe it's extremely important that people that are on the Ag Board are actively involved in agriculture. I, I, you know, you scarcely be a brick mason unless you had experience at being a brick mason. And to be a farmer, especially in this world today, I've told numerous people now, you can't just go to college and become a farmer. I think it's, it takes years and years of experience growing up in it. And I, you know, a lot of people may take offense to this comment, and I certainly don't mean it. But, but the point is, is, is you need to have a vested interest in agriculture to be on the Ag Board.
All right. So I don't think it's, I mean, I, I'm going to, is there any other discussion?
Mickey?
I still understand the comments, but, but I don't need, it doesn't need to be elaborated at all. But we should, we certainly don't need to be dictating what people's experience and background needs to be before they serve on our facilitory.
Yeah. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think anyone suggested that that should be in the requirements here. But I, but I believe the past practice has been you either reside in the district or you have a business, an Ag-defined business in, in the district. That's the way it had been in the past. I mean, some people might own property in all seven districts, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're Ag properties. I mean, they could be rental properties, you know, just, just income.
But they still have to pass our board to get on the Ag Board.
That is correct.
Just because they live there doesn't mean that we're going to vote for them, or they automatically get there. They'd have to pass our.
That's correct. But the, the, the past requirement was you were either a resident or you operated a business. And I think that's, is that the gist of what you're getting at, Tammy?
That's what I'm trying to say.
So.
Which I think we, we've practiced this whole time was doing that. But, you know, that, at the bottom lines, we do appoint to that board. But, you know, evidently, from the district is not exact enough. So I'm from District Seven. I live in District Seven. So we got, I guess you're asking for clarification. So reside in the district or have an Ag business in the district. And of course, an Ag business is a farm. I mean, anything that's definite, the definition of agriculture.
And of course, be a resident of Bedford County. Just because you have a business in Bedford County doesn't mean you can serve on this board if you're not a resident of Bedford.
So can I say the Agriculture Economic Development Advisory Board shall consist of twelve Bedford County residents appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Members shall be appointed from each of the seven county election districts and must reside or own an Ag-related business in a particular district.
Yes.
And I think we might want to throw in the word or lease. I mean, because we can imagine someone live in one area and actually leased their hay field or whatever in another one. So I think as long as it's agricultural related, I don't think we want to limit it to ownership. That's just my suggestion.
So do we want to say must reside or?
Well, that would be part of operating.
Okay.
So operate.
I think operate is probably the best word.
Or operate an Ag-defined business in a particular agriculture. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mrs. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second from Mr. Tuck? Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carried. Seven up.
Thank you.
Sorry. All right. Next, consideration of a resolution approving the discontinuance of Route 844, Recycle Road, Resolution R.042522-04. Staff presentation by Public Works Director Doug Hall.
Good evening. I present for your consideration to resolution approving the discontinuance of Route 844. That's Recycle Road right in front of the landfill. It's less than two tenths of a mile. Basically, it comes off of 43, picks a sharp right, goes down towards the cans. There's a couple of reasons to do this. We've spoken with VDOT. VDOT's amicable, amicable to do this. Essentially, if we ever want to make any improvements on the property, having this out of the VDOT system will allow us to do that without any headaches. It will also allow us to better service those, those cans and containers down at the end.
This is the ones to the right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, when you come in and you pull to the right, that section of road is technically on the VDOT system right now. And we're asking that we take it off of the VDOT system to allow for future improvements and for easier access to those cans with machinery, et cetera.
All right. Any questions for staff?
Pretty sure I know the answer, but I just want to make sure because we have a tower on Recycle Road.
Mm-hmm.
Coming out of the VDOT system would not impact any easements granted for fiber going in, none of that stuff.
Right. No, I mean, we have towers that are sent for further back on private property.
That we had to provide state access to the tower.
My understanding, and forgive me, is that discontinuance is different than abandonment. Discontinuance just takes it out of the maintenance part, and abandonment would actually be it's no longer a public road. So I think we're only asking for, am I right?
Yes.
It'll still be a road, just a responsibility to maintain. It's now going to be.
Correct. And it allows us to do improvements and such. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right. I'll open it up for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adoption of Resolution R.042522-04.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mr. Tuck. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a second from Mr. Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next, consideration of a resolution authorizing the dismissal of a request for a waiver from the State Board of Elections to continue operating split voting precincts. Resolution R.042522-05. Staff presentation by Patrick, by Patrick Skelly, County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As your agenda item indicates, in 2020, state code changed to say that you can no longer operate a split precinct. In other words, if you have a precinct, you're supposed to have it wholly within one congressional district, not have two different ballots in a precinct, unless you have approval by the state. Our redistricting process is still behind schedule due to census and delays at the state level, not the local level, state level. So we are forced to go with our existing election district boundaries. Based on that, we still have five precincts that are split based on where we currently are. So we are requesting the, this board to authorize us to apply for a waiver for those five precincts moving forward until we can finish up redistricting.
Any questions for staff? All right, any questions for staff?
There were only three that were listed in the resolution.
You'll have to excuse me. I think we started with five, and it might be down to three at this point.
All right, this increases our cost, does it not?
Right now, we're still operating them as split precincts, so it's not an additional cost moving forward. That cost will come down, but for the present time, it stays at the higher level, yes.
All right, any other questions?
It has nothing to do with that one house. It's in District Six.
We'll still be dealing with that when all is said and done, but I think we need to give that one.
Is there anything we can do about that, any kind of resolution?
Yeah, that would have to be between us and, I think it's Batata Rock Bridge, but apparently, that was by agreement years and years ago that we're the taxing authority for that residence, so unless they want to take it back, we're stuck with it. But for purposes of tonight, this is not germane. No.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? I move we approve resolution R. 042522-05.
You've heard the motion from Mr. Johnson. Second from Mr. Scott. It says roll call vote. Does it have to be a roll call vote?
I wouldn't think so. I think there'd be a voice vote.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh. Next, consideration of a resolution approving settlement enclosed out of the Big Island Tower project. Resolution BA 042522-06. Staff presentation by County Attorney Patrick Skelly.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. We have been working on this for some time. We finally got all the information and the revisions to our settlement that we had discussed prior. So, at this point, we do have a viable and approvable settlement agreement and a closing date of May sixteenth to exchange money and deed. And before you tonight is a resolution to release the remaining retainage for the project, which will be offset against the monies owed to the county pursuant to the settlement, and close the project out.
That'll be released upon closing?
Yes.
All right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Scott?
I know it's not going to be any discussion on this, so since it's in my district, I have a motion that we approve. Resolution BA 042522-06.
All right, you've heard the motion from Mr. Scott to approve this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Who got the second?
I think Squeaky did.
Mrs. Parker got the second. All right, I think we're going to have to take a voice vote here.
Roll call vote.
I mean, yeah, roll call vote, sorry. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley? And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion carried, seven oh. Next, we have a consideration of a resolution approving the Forest Library Playground Project donated by the Forest Rotary Club. Resolution R. 042522-02. Staff presentation by Parks and Rec Director White Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. In front of you, you have the consideration of the resolution for a playground located directly behind the Forest Library. This project has been a partnership that's been going on for about a year now. The Forest Rotaries were very generous to come forth. I've got a few announcements, Johnson there. They were interested in providing amenity to the property directly behind AV Library. Been very generous to offer $65,000 amenity upfront with the possibility of a $25,000 additional each year for the next four years. So, I've got a few members here of the Forest Rotary. Be happy to let them speak. Mr. Ken Selmer's here, as well as Mrs. Laura Tyree. They've served on their playground committee. I've also been in contact with some members of the Radford Goldie family. We have a gentleman here on behalf of them as well to show their support. Be happy to answer any questions, but if Mr. Selmer would like to come up, I'd be happy to let him talk a little bit about the Forest Rotary Club and where the funds come from and how these monies were raised.
Thank you, everybody, for your consideration this evening. My name is Ken Selmer. I'm with the Forest Rotary Club. I act as the treasurer of both the club and of the foundation. The foundation would actually be making this gift to the county, and with me is Laura Tyree. She also serves on the board of both the club and of the foundation. Laura can give you a little bit of history about the club itself and the project.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Laura Tyree, and I serve on the board of both the Forest Rotary Club and the Forest Rotary Club Foundation. I'm a charter member from February of two thousand and three, and as a service organization, we've always looked for ways to give back to the county, both the people in need and the county itself. We've benefited the library with several different projects. We donated e-readers, books. We helped with the annual book sale and a number of other things. In two thousand and eighteen, we started a new annual fundraising project for our club referred to as our Field of Honor. Some of you all may be aware of this. It's a two-week project, a field of flags that we put off of Gravesmill Road in front of ACS. And all of those flags bear the name of someone that is being honored. A veteran, former military, deceased military, firefighters, police officers, health care workers, and any other first responders. Those one thousand-plus flags fly every year and have enabled us to get the funds that we need to finally survey our club members to see what big project they wanted to put forward. The playground was overwhelmingly the biggest thing that everyone wanted to be involved in, especially a playground where we would have equipment and provide some things for children in need, both, you know, children with physical needs, children with handicaps of all areas, whether it be educational, whether they're autistic, whether they have mobility issues. But we want to provide activities and things there on that playground that all children can enjoy.
At present time, we do have $65,000 that we're ready to start and pay for the project should it be approved this evening. The paperwork that you see in front of us is the initial phase one. Going forward, the phases will happen every fall. Our Field of Honor is usually right around the first two weeks of September, and we would look to have future phases built directly after that event finishes into October. Future phases would be something in the realm of $25,000 to $30,000 a year for another four-year commitment from the club. And as you can see that from the paperwork that's there, I believe the company is called Max Fit Play. It's an ADA-approved type of piece of equipment. And future items that we would look to do would be things such as swing sets, musical instrument areas, educational boards. One of the things that we're looking to do is at the request of the library is to put stations around the track that's there. And in those stations, the library would put pages of books so a child can walk with their parent or guardian and read the book and be encouraged to keep walking around the track to the next piece. And the club would build those themselves and install those. But if with your approval this evening, we would look to make this order during this coming week, and we hope to have the playground installed, this initial setup, by the end of August. Thank you so much for your time.
Any?
Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate, we have been the benefactors out at the lake from the rotary participating in park improvements, and it's a big deal. And we really thank you guys for stepping up for this.
Take our money, please.
You won't hear that very often.
And you said you had a representative from the Goldie family here as well?
Yes, sir. I'm Jessica McCarthy, the son-in-law of Laura Bratcher Goldie, and she is very enthusiastically supports this very generous program, ordering the parks, recreation, and working together well within the guidelines of the restrictions years ago when Laura Goldie sold the property. So, we think it's a great project, especially for our kids, so thank you all so much.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you for being here. I was, whenever someone talks about doing something with that property, my first, the first statement is, have you checked with the Goldies? So, thank you very much. All right. Any discussion? Anybody mind if I make this motion since it's in my district? All right, then I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution R. 042522-02.
I'll second it.
All right, you heard the motion from Mr. Sharp. Second from Mrs. Bensley. Since there's money involved, I guess we have to take a vote this way. Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Next, we have board committee reports. We have none. Board comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment or two. First, tomorrow is Supervisor Johnson Day in Bedford County. It's his birthday. We want to recognize that big momentous day. And then to move back regarding nursing home issues or thoughts, I would like to see us move forward with some sort of commission. I don't know if that's the right word I want to use, but a commission made up of some subject matter people, experts, people that have a real vested interest in that nursing home's success. So that, I think we heard loud and clear last week, and I think that was a good recommendation that came from the public last week. I don't really know what it needs to look like, but I would think that we could fashion something much similar to all the other committees that we do, one from each district, a team of seven to be a buffer between us and the nursing home. But anyway, that's just a thought. If you'd like to have any other comments on that or consensus for our staff, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would concur on that. It seemed to be a handful of people that really had some good comments, some good input, and it'd be a shame not to utilize that talent since they all were offering their services.
I don't know that I would limit it to just our, to reside in our districts, but maybe we each could pick one. But like if there were two people who were qualified in Tammy's district, I would, you know, I would like to, and I couldn't find one of mine, I would certainly like to be able to nominate someone in someone else's district.
Maybe we should consider that to be sort of an at-large type committee. Maybe it doesn't have to be seven, maybe five doesn't have to be, but they could just be at-large representatives.
Just somewhere to start with it.
Well, we can, we can work out the details later, but is a consensus, is that's a good idea?
Yes, sir.
Sure is. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say that the folks in Montvale, my district have created a, I'm sorry, I've had two concussions in the past six weeks, I'm not quite together, but they've created a 501(c)(3) incorporated, and are doing a lot of work to come up with a way to solve the issue of the Montvale, the old Montvale School with a minimal amount of expense. And they're very enthusiastic and very hardworking about doing it, and I just want to congratulate them and it needs to be mentioned.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but there's a, over around my district and Supervisor Tuck's district, we had a big loss here in the last few days for somebody that's very popular. He's a world-class bass fisherman. He travels all around the country fishing in bass tournaments. He taught at Stanton River High School. He was a coach at Stanton River High School. And I'd just like to recognize that I went to his funeral yesterday out there, and it was just a wonderful thing and a beautiful day. Dale Wilson, I'd just like to remember Dale Wilson. He's a pretty big man in Bedford County.
Yeah, well, thank you for mentioning that. Anyone else? All right, next, we have board appointments, which I don't believe we have any. County Administrator report?
Just had one item. This is the time of year that we receive, or my office receives debris disposal event requests for the Smith Mountain Lake. So, I've received letters on behalf of the former director at TLAC, Paula Schoffner, in case there's a debris removal event at Smith Mountain Lake. Also received a request from the Leesville Lake Association, and their request is to waive the tipping fees at the landfill to make the events cost-effective. It's helpful for these associations to not have to pay those tipping fees. In the past years, these types of events generally generate between two, three or four, two to four thirty-yard cubic containers, which, in talking with Doug, I think we figured out that if both events were real successful, it could result in maybe up to $1,000 in lost revenue per event. But the good work that they do in order to make this happen in past years, I think administratively, we've approved that, approved those requests. And I just kind of wanted to bring that to the attention of the board that we, I plan to continue that tradition and allow those tipping fees to be waived for those cleanup events.
Any questions there?
I'd just like to comment that it might cost us $1,000 in tax revenue. I think somewhere, I remember reading that it was over $20,000 worth of volunteer hours contributed to that pay. And so, I think for the county, you give up $1,000 to get $20,000 worth of volunteerism.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next, we have County Attorney report?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'll just point out, remind everyone, May ninth, we will have a work session with VDOT at 5:00 PM and a regular meeting at seven. And May twenty-third, we have a work session at five and a regular meeting at seven. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Mr. Scott. Is there a second? Mrs. Parker seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.